That's good.
I will ask the town manager to discuss the protocols for the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder for everybody, as you just heard, this meeting is being recorded and we'll upload it onto the town's YouTube page and post the link for anybody to watch. Um, I'll turn on uh captions for folks that they need to follow along that way as well. And uh reminder, folks, that if you uh I'll I'll try to send a message to you just so that we can identify you for the record uh at the council's discretion, they may allow public comments typically during the work sessions, we try to limit uh limit discussion to the council so that we can move forward on on their items. Um but as a reminder, all items um that the council votes on, we do hold a public hearing at the actual council meeting, so there's always an opportunity for residents to um comment on them. If for some reason this meeting gets in interrupted in a way that doesn't allow us to continue, we'll we'll just cut it off. Uh we'll disseminate a new link for folks to to rejoin and we'll carry on uh with our business after we've reconvened that way. And uh just another housekeeping item, um I'll I'll try to stay on top of it as well, but if you aren't actively engaged in the conversation, just after you uh kindly mute yourself and uh stop your video, uh just makes it a little bit easier to follow along uh for the recording and for those that are joined in virtually. Um and so with that, uh Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council President, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's your, thank you, Mr. Manager, Mr. President.
Just to clarify, for council members, we have Ron and myself here in person, Debbie, you're online, do we have? Shannon or Kuma?
As far as I know, council members, Roback and Kumar are planning to be here, but I guess I haven't gotten that much.
I just said.
I I assume they're just running a few minutes late.
That's fine. Um, okay, well, we have a bunch of, I think, interesting topics to discuss, starting off with a um a little bit of guidance from our our refresher of guidance from our town council on ex parte discussions. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, yeah, just by way of refresher, variance hearings are subject to principles of due process. So that means, among other things, that all the evidence considered by the council needs to be on the record. So it's been my advice regarding site visits, that site visits are are permissible, but council members who elect to go and take a look at a property that's subject to a variance hearing should place their impressions on the record so that interested parties have the opportunity to agree with or rebut a council member impression. So, you know, for example, if a council member were to say before the record closes, I visited the property and I observed, et cetera. And that way, the interested parties have the opportunity to address what evidence the council member independently acquired. That said, council members should not deliberate with each other about the site visit before the hearing. And you should only go alone and should not discuss with the parties on the site, the the variance request. It's somewhat of a fine line. I I I think maybe the town's prior council advised advised against site visits.
Well, well, the prior council advised that if a council member wished to make a site visit, it uh they needed to notify the applicant and the other council members. That's that was his. You know, this is like a legal judgment, but now that we have our that was the guidance provided by the previous senator.
Okay.
We have you, so whatever you say is what we, I suggest we follow.
Yeah, and I I think that that prior approach is appropriate, too. I mean, notification obviously is is a courteous thing to do. If a council member is going to step onto the property, then permission is required. But, you know, you can certainly view the property from the street without permission. And notifying the other council members is helpful as well, because then you can make sure a quorum doesn't inadvertently show up. I hope that's helpful, Mr. Mayor.
I I think one question that I have is are you saying that that it's okay for pretty triers of the case, let's say, to go visit the property as long as they're there by themselves? And but is it also important that they disclose that at the hearing? And at what point in the hearing do you suggest?
Yeah, yeah, that's. That's correct, Mr. Mayor, and I would suggest that that disclosure be made before the record closes and preferably before the applicant has had the opportunity to present and before other interested parties have had the opportunity to comment. You know, otherwise, we might need to go backwards and reopen the record.
Okay, so let, so then how about if we add to our instructions that first the the um the town puts on the case, let's say, you know, presents the the case and there and then and the town's uh opinion of the of the application, then before the applicant comments, maybe we should then ask if any council member wanted to add anything to the to the record. Is that, would that be the right time?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that would be a good idea, and we could call it site visit impressions or something to that effect.
Okay, but it's not required to people that the council was still, obviously, but if you do go and 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 let, I mean, I think that the president I did it beautifully at the last hearing because he announced that he'd gone and and gave, and then and then there was time for for them to rebut or what have you, but still, I think we need to be organized about it. And and so I think that that Matt can just add that to the to the uh to the instructions, you know, to the to the procedure.
Yeah, that that's.
There's no, so that, because because, you know, we're all about being transparent about it, and we want to make sure that there's no, you know, secret kind of meetings and all that 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 someone could could get upset about and not get upset about, so. So I think that would be good.
Yeah, I I think so, and I've always found that site visits are a good idea because the applicant is alleging in the application that their property is unusual for some reason or other, and so you know, it's often hard to judge that assertion without seeing the property, because seeing the property is sometimes the the best way to understand the application.
And it's also important that we do everything right because we want to prevent the applicant from appealing on that. If you, if they want to appeal on something else, but we we want to limit the possibility of appeal based on it it counts member having made, you know, violated the export.
Indeed, indeed. Yes, I agree.
Thank you very much, Ron. Any questions or comments of?
But I mean, I'm gonna say that I think visiting site, the site is probably useful for council members um to help understand especially the plans that were given. And so I I don't think Ron is discouraging us from doing it, it's just reporting that we've done it.
Yep, yep. Um Debbie, see you up there. Any thoughts, comments?
No, I I I just um, I just want to get it, make it clear. So I go see a site. I walk by, you know, um I look at it. I have some questions or concerns, opinions. And at what point do I voice that, that I was there? Is that when when the topic is introduced? Or when we go around and we each have something to say, and then I say, well, I walked by and I saw whatever. Is that what we mean?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Before, it will be the, you would have the opportunity before the applicant comments on the town's findings.
Okay. Sounds good.
And and you'll get a reminder because Matt will write into the instructions and then we'll follow it. But I think that Castor Bar is right. I think it, I think it's good to encourage people to go as long as they don't violate anything. I mean, everybody was going, and you know, all these years that I've been coming to these areas, everybody goes anyway. We want to make sure that we're doing it legally so that we're limiting any possibility of of negligence or liability.
Okay.
So, because I went and saw that site at four eight one five Cumberland, um but I walked into that backyard, so now I should probably get permission before I walk into the backyard.
Yes, yeah.
And then, um, so what do I do? Just email Matt and ask him if I have permission? Or and then Matt would email the builder or something, or the owner?
If if you'd like as well, I could just, when they submit, I could also just ask them, you know, now that you've submitted it, do do we have permission for town officials, town staff or council members to enter the site?
Okay.
Right, I was just thinking, this is this is official business. We're not just sightseeing because we're curious, we're trying to understand the situations, we can make informed judgment.
Yeah, and you're so, you need to go into that lot and look at what's going on there now in order to really understand.
Yeah, my, I mean, it might be. I mean, I I'll I'll start to do that if that's helpful.
That would be helpful.
And 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 then, you know, the the only thing I can think of off the top of my head might be just to, if their concern is avoiding, uh, you know, anybody in town entering their site, they they might say, well, as a courtesy, can you just have the the staff or council or whoever it might be, let me know, you know, so I know that's then not a trust cost.
Right. Okay. Great.
Thanks.
And uh next up is is an exciting topic, I think, that would be interestingness of youth council, EJ, can you uh talk about it a little bit?
Uh, yes.
I can hear, I don't know if people.
It might be easier, yeah. I think I think a seat over here.
I have, if you want to. So, in the packet for this meeting, I have a proposal for the creation of a Somerset Youth Council. Uh, this was originally brought up at the July work session, uh just a one-page proposal after councillor Heller asked for potential raise the increased youth engagement in Somerset. I did the one-page proposal, and then after that, uh, the council asked for me to do a more comprehensive proposal, which is now what I've done. Uh, the proposal goes over uh the goals of creating such program, all of them being related to youth engagement, specifically educating Somerset youths on local government process, providing an opportunity for youth to handle youth issues and provide an opportunity for leadership, uh to grow their leadership experience and facilitate that. I looked at multiple youth councils across the country, uh over about fifteen of them, and as well as several guides from different uh the National League of Cities, different state leagues of cities, et cetera. Kind of what I found is the main reasons to create a youth council is all related again to this issue of youth engagement, but specifically giving real-world experience, giving them a voice and enhancing uh participation that not only allows, has benefits for youth, but also for the council and the town, it makes the community more representative, gains insight into many perspectives that are less heard and encourages youth to be more active. And then I broke the proposal up into several sections, uh responsibilities of the council and staff, uh the composition of it, uh the application process, the meetings. And then I went over also accomplishments that I've seen other youth councils do throughout the country, so those quickly go where it is. So from the council and town and staff perspective, is one of the staff, which would be me, would serve the role as a facilitator uh working to not only establish youth council, but then once it's established, make sure that they have guidance on how it operates as well as uh set the calendar and things like that. Um, in my proposal, I asked for two councillors or one councillor and a mayor to serve as advisors for the YTC. Uh, I have this, I have this highlighted because of directly impacting you. I believe this would be an important aspect of it because I've seen a lot of youth councils have this as it provides kind of a mentorship to the program. Uh, the composition of YTC would consist of at least five youths, uh but could include more depending on interest. Uh, and then there would be five officer roles that would have different responsibilities. Uh, mayor, council president, clerk treasurer, communications, um. This would, this slightly limits our own town government, except for the clerk treasurer being two different roles instead of one role. Um, these five officers could be juniors or seniors. And then the application process is you to be accepted in the program, would have to complete an application process. I included several examples, including Cedar Hills, Broken Arrow, Sugar Hill, and Edson, which are towns throughout the country. Basically, I've seen different ways this is done, so that's why if this is a bit more open-ended, to the first proposal, for example, I've seen some where applicants have to reapply every year, others where they have to, once they are accepted, they are in until they graduate. Uh, the most common uh resident eligibility requirements that pretty much all of them have are be a resident of the town, attend schools within that county or counties, depending on if the town is a part of one or more county, are in grades nine through twelve. Uh, I've also seen additional ones that we can implement, including uh registration of vote for those that are sixty plus, charter amendments finalized, having an GPA and its requirement requiring letters of recommendation, uh requiring an interview, participation fee. I've also seen some go as low as middle school as well for uh entry entrance, and then who decides membership, I've seen different ways, I've seen uh, so I've included three options here, and also mentioned that a hybrid could be included. Uh, one way is the whole count, the whole council can meet to go over the applications. The other is the two councillors and the uh facilitator could meet, or it could be a staff decision as well. Finally, I go over meetings, how they kind of operate uh specifically for this proposal. I'm proposing it as a pilot program. Most uh pretty much every single youth council does it on the school year. However, since the school year begins in September, this would be harder, hard to do now, so instead I'm proposing a pilot program that begins this year's, in this school year's second semester. That way, we could gain feedback and make any changes. Um, meetings are, I basically also kind of give an overview of the first few meetings as well as the last meeting. And then finally, I've also say too that um I would like these potential youth councillors to at least have one attend every council meeting and have one attend at least every committee meeting uh just to sit in and observe. And then some of the main accomplishments I've noticed, youth councils complete throughout the country, things like hosting uniforms, uh organizing community service projects, leading advocacy campaigns, uh organizing fundraiser, fundraisers, and then attending and even hosting their own public events. That's just kind of the.
Just, I just wanted to add really quickly, just from a purely process standpoint, the idea that we were going for is that EJ's kind of highlighted in the documents some of the items where it would be helpful to get some council feedback. So you can either, you know, we can discuss it tonight or give him feedback over the next month, then discuss it again at the September work session to then introduce it in October so that we can start advertising it there, do a full write-up in the Town Journal, start to get some students so that we can kick it off in January. That's kind of the idea that we're we're going for.
Okay, so I think that this is fantastic. And I love all the ideas that um EJ brought up and that that, I I do think that it's also important to um to start to get the youth to comment on this before you make your final decisions. Right, because you, because it sounded like you want to impose it, just because it works in other places, it's going to work with our youth. But so you want to have them to have a buy-in in the beginning so they can't complain, oh, I didn't, we didn't want to do it that way, or or why do you, why is it like this? So I think it's really important to disseminate this and to sort of force the the youth to get engaged in it, because we've made so many attempts over the years to engage youth, like we tried to have youth editors of Town Journal. I don't know if anybody remembers that, but and and here and there, and it's, so so we can learn by our mistakes and and I think that um this is a great um initiative. And I congratulate Gatsimer Heller, too, for as a teacher, as a, as a teach, train teacher.
So do you think we have to kind of identify, you know, someone as like a youth ambassador or something, like to really take it on, because otherwise, do we just send it out?
The EJ call the youth.
I I will note, one thing is after the advice of the mayor, there will be an article about this in September Town Journal, which I hope.
But you have to be proactive because that Town Journal, as I've always said, our our stuff is only written by the female head of household. So so I think we have to be proactive with our youth and identify all, like, identify them. And I love the idea that they're, if they want to be on it, they have to be registered, but well, if they're sixteen. But I'm not sure that, I think it can go lower than ninth grade because we have some precocious kids here. I mean, what do you all think? Couldn't it be in like sixth grade?
One, I think eighth grade.
I mean, probably kindergarten, you know, we have kindergartners and recruiting at college. I mean, you know, you've got an extraordinary group of youth here.
Claire's going to third grade, she can be.
Right, right, so Claire could could be the mayor already.
Yeah. Can I, can I say something about this? Um, uh, first of all, I think this is fabulous. This is so much better than anything I had imagined. So thank you, EJ. Um, I think it's fabulous, and obviously I would love to be part of this. I think we should start with the older kids. And then as it becomes more successful and we really have our sea legs, then bring in the younger kids. I don't know that I'd bring them in any lower than eighth grade. But um, I don't know. Let's just start with what EJ has suggested, and then we can back it up and get younger kids as we go as as what seems appropriate. So that's what I'm thinking, but this is great. Thank you, EJ.
This might be also, um, you know, an instance where Mayor Slaven's suggestion of getting feedback, because I think one of the things we we had talked about is there might be some fifth, sixth graders that are really interested in that that might be on their student council or something in their middle school or their or their elementary school, primary school. But the, on the flip side, you might have some seniors, juniors that aren't wanting to be in the group and feeling like they're babysitting, you know, eleven, twelve-year-olds, too, so maybe getting feedback from the kids on finding the right balance.
Maybe one day there'll be two youth councils.
Exactly, yes, yeah.
You know, like a junior, like a middle school youth council and a high school. Because that is probably in high school, I don't know, you all would know this better, high schoolers don't want to deal with a sixth grader. Right, because they're they're like in a high level. Right. I mean, you know, our high schoolers are doing college level stuff.
You know what else? It's hard to get a sixth grader out to a nighttime meeting. Okay, it's, that could be too late for them. So that's why I think we start with the older kids and work our way back. Getting, you know, and just see how it, let it develop. I think over time, it's going to take, it's going to develop. And uh we can, we can roll with that.
This is great. I wanted to just share two thoughts and discuss them a bit further. I think that this, this council has sort of like two purposes really, as opposed to most of our other now we have uh committees, sorry, committees, in that um the most committees have a specific mission to to accomplish some things for the town residents. I think this media is is having that, but also having a role in developing leadership and civic understanding and governance in the youth who are part of the committee. So that in mind, I think that um I like the option of one council member and the mayor being liaisons to the truth. I think the mayor's position is experience brings a little bit more leadership and some of that governance perspective that I think would be of value and interest to to youth that participate. So that was one thought I wanted to share. Yeah, I I think grade seven to twelve, maybe grades eight to twelve, but I think nine to twelve is fine, especially if you think of this as a pilot. I know that that the committee structure is is proposed, it's different than all of our other committees. And I guess my initial thought is we actually don't need to decide structure right now. That could be one of the first activities of this youth group, working with the council member and the mayor's to figure out what they want, what they think will be effective. But as described, this is more of a a mayor organization that that mirrors our council and committee approach, as opposed to just being another town committee. It it could go either way or it could be a, in the next. So I'm excited to move forward. I like the idea of starting in January, calling this a pilot, but as long as we have interest, I I would sure hope we keep this going.
Right, um, I mean, it it's it's a, it's a well laid out and a very good idea, and I very much like it. Um, and I would like Steve say, uh, it's through cross-grade, it's really raining, uh, that. Okay, I wouldn't limit it to student of the school within the county, though, it within the DMV and other purchase, uh, because some of the kids going to private schools are in DC, um, so it may be more broader than that, absolutely. And the only other thing is like, how do we set this up at the organization within the town? Do we take it formally committee so that it has a charter? And structure that way, or do we have some other structure for it, the only thing.
Why don't you ask your question? Maybe you should ask Ron that. Well, that's good. Um, the mayor had a good suggestion there. Ron, do you have a perspective on whether this committee, youth committee, should have a formal charter or not?
So generally speaking, I do recommend that there be charters just to help framework the expectations and duration, deliverables, and so on. Doesn't have to be that that complicated. But just some general guidelines are usually a good idea for this this type of thing.
And if I, if I may, just one, one thing that we had sort of discussed is maybe if we have a a very bare-bones charter, but then again, the the this, the youth that are part of the council, that's part of their idea as well, is to kind of create a charter, almost like incorporating documents for a city, so it kind of gives them another kind of civic duty and obligation serving on it.
I think that's a great idea. Okay, um, Shannon, you have any other?
No, I think it sounds great.
Okay. All right, so do you have what you need from us, EJ, to to move this along? Write the article and I guess maybe tweak this documentation, eighth grade to twelve, et cetera.
I like so. As I, I don't know if I mentioned this previously, is there will be an article in the September Journal about this, uh, asking for feedback. And then now, if you have other feedback you think of later, you can email me as well. I believe right now the goal me and Matt kind of discussed is bringing an updated proposal. I believe right now the goal me and Matt kind of discussed is bringing an updated proposal to the September meeting.
Okay. Thank you, great. Um, now I'm creating another sort of topic area. I'm excited about. Building code stuff. You might think I'm joking, but I really, I think building code is exciting stuff, and I know that um. Matt and staff have been doing some research, so I'm looking forward to seeing what they have in discussion. With that, can you take away that?
Yeah, sure, um, you just try to put up, uh, I share my screen, that might be helpful, um, for this. First discussion for the first item. Um. Not even necessarily because it has any more import than than some of the other topics, but. Just by virtue of the fact that it was the first one that we had identified, so we're kind of a half step ahead on building height than we are on some of the others. Um, but um. Here we put together, um. A uh breakdown of, like where we left off the last meeting. Was that we we would look at how the the codes to some of our neighboring municipalities. Compared to some recent projects, and so we just took took a few, um, that you might be familiar with, and then compared them. Uh, to. Montgomery County is maybe a little bit redundant, because obviously they were approved by Montgomery County if there was a permit issue. But um, Montgomery County, Chevy Chase Village, Chevy Chase Town, and the Village of Martin's additions. The reason it's just those three, um, is because those were the only three that have specific height requirements in them. Um, so I I my kind of takeaways from this, um. The the main difference between those three municipalities and Montgomery County's code. Is that Montgomery County's code says. A building can have a maximum height of thirty five feet or a mean height of thirty feet. So that or is the the main difference between that and the other municipalities, which say in general, it needs to fit both. Um, Martin's additions has the strictest of of the height code, so that's why you're seeing more red there. Um, but I I did note that they also have an established building height, which I think council member Barr had brought up as something. We we may discuss. Um, another thing that I I thought of as I was looking through this, um, that's come up recently too, is the idea of flat roofs and green roofs. We we may. We may think about how that would fit into with the max building height if we wanted to put in incentives. If, for instance, green roofs were involved. And in that's, um, in that same vein. The devil in this is always kind of in the details to a certain extent. How, how, not just the measurements themselves. But we might also want to think about how we define building heights and how we determine building height is measured. And one of the examples that I gave, uh. It has an elevator that goes to the top of the roof, but Montgomery County doesn't measure the elevator as part of the building height. So we might want to say any, you know, any structure is part of the measurement, for example. Um, so with with that, you know, I I open it up to you, I can try to answer some questions if you have any. Um, I think two of the things we had talked about is. Uh, debating if we wanted to consider code amendments. Um, and then the other thing that uh had been brought up before is if we wanted to do a a holistic study of. Kind of character and existing structures within town that might also help guide. What makes sense, um, given our existing, um, building, uh. Building structures in town, um, so.
First, I just want to say thank you very much, Matt, to you and the staff upon this together. This is very. Useful and it's it's presented in a very clear manner, um, and I appreciate the work that went into it. My sense is that. Um, there is. General consensus on the part of the council. That. That there has been a trench towards homes that are houses that are too large for lots here in Somerset. But what does too large mean? I think this is one way of. Perhaps fairly modestly controlling this, the size of those houses. Um, I should note also comments from neighbors and residents in town here about the heights of, uh, some buildings. I like the idea of all of a study. To benchmark or reference things, but. But I was that I think we have enough information to take a first step, as much as we did with stormwater management. I think we can take a step and. And then get feedback as we go and adjust it down the road, so I think we could. Proceed with some modest height. Height constraints while we also. Not deciding to better understand where we're at. So those were my thoughts, Rob.
Yeah, um. I had some rather different thoughts, the the. When I saw this table, I saw a lot more blue and red, um. Which means that. Most of the code changes that we would consider in building height. Would not have stopped the constructions that we've seen already. The only exception is Martin's addition, which has an established building height, which does seem to be restricting the size of homes. So that is the one exception there. And I'm not sure going for building height is the best way to. Really get at the problem. The problem for everybody who is familiar with it is. Builders have to pay so much for the lot that they buy, that they got to put a big home up there in order to make profit. It's that simple. And how do we then address that problem? Um, one way is to find ways in our code to encourage renovations rather than in homes. So that they're built on the same footprint that the existing home is on, and that would necessarily keep it smaller. Um, and that that would work, um.
You know. Can I say one thing to you? So I I think that your question. Uh, regarding the size, these are big price and everything is really. A a major one, and and one of the uh ways that the. County Council and the county executive are trying to deal with. These kind of regulations is to actually work with the um. The development community, the building community, to find out if there are ways that we can pass laws. To, um. That keep our neighborhood in character, but would also not prevent them from making a profit. Because they might have some ideas, so maybe maybe we should ask some builders about that. Rather than getting into fights with them when they come with applications, ask them that change, how we can change the law so it will work for everybody. And even for the market.
Well, right, the other way is more drastic and I it it requires serious discussion in the town. But. With the um. Passing of the next thirty year plan. Um, we're an area that's targeted for, um, other kinds of development. Including duplexes and burn homes and. Small apartment buildings and couldn't know what else. Um, I don't think it's feasible in Somerset that all of these should be allowed, but. I think it is feasible that we could have some duplexes in, um, on some laws. And were we to allow that, we would have to also modify our setback. I'll explain that what apply, we would have to do that. Um, we would get smaller homes and we would get a different mix of residents and builders would be able to make a profit because we're building two homes in a single lot at that point. Um, so those are things that can make a real difference. Renovations encouraged duplexes. They are, um, more substantial. Um, this can only make a small difference.
Thank you, Rob, um, and. I I appreciate your comments, I also uh agree with your assessment as the mayor about. The pressures on developers to. Essentially pump up the size of a house to get more square footage, right? So it's it's a, it's a difficult thing to try and and address. Um, one. Suggestion you raised there, I wanted just to talk to to Ron about, um. I guess you're talking about the twenty fifteen.
That's new thirty year plan, right.
So my understanding is that if something like that were enacted. That would supersede anything we're doing now, because all we can do is control our sixty, our sixty is. The second residential. Land that we have in Somerset, that's what we're. Our land is described as if if twenty fifty changes that designation. Are any rules we have controlling our sixty are not applicable. Is that correct, Ron?
So it, it depends and. There's some information that might be appropriate for closed session, but what I can say in open session is under Maryland law. Section twenty five oh nine of the land use article of Maryland code, the town has the ability to. Impose building regulations that are stricter than the county's zoning and building regulations. And you know, that that authority as written and applies to. You know, certain structures on land zoned for single family. Uses now under. Under thrive Montgomery, as I understand it. The zoning won't change, the county's just going to. Likely amend by zoning text amendment, what types of structures are allowed in certain. Single family zones, so I don't think that would would necessarily restrict the town's authority. In other words, the county could allow a duplex or a multi-family structure. Where currently only a single family residence is allowed in the R sixty, but that doesn't necessarily mean the town can't impose setbacks. With respect to that, that new building.
And just to flesh that out a bit more in other communities, I mean, you think of Minneapolis. They didn't change their setbacks and virtually no multi-unit building was constructed because they didn't change their setbacks. In other words, builders didn't, weren't able to use that. So before I go around, the other uh color thought I have is. I think we. I I actually, I I support that idea, very much support the idea of affordable housing, and I think that the town might want to consider. Various measures in the future to make that a reality in Somerset. But in terms of the the short term issue of. Building on our lots. With tear downs over the next couple of years. I would like to see us take some action, that's just me personally. Debbie, do you have some?
Yeah, um, a couple of things. One is, I agree with you, Steve, we need to take some action. And I'm not sure the best way to do that. I wonder if we shouldn't get a little bit of outside outside help on this. Where we hire a consultant who can help us figure out really what we should do. I know if left to my own devices. I I would be pretty, um, pretty harsh at this, you know, uh, in terms of setbacks and height and lot size. Um, but I'm not necessarily right, you know, I I I don't, I I just think we could use some help. And I think we might consider that. Another thing is, I think having the conversation about duplexes is just too early. So I think if we shook out the neighborhood, they wouldn't want it. Um, and I would rather that be a separate, probably a separate conversation, and if Thrive twenty fifty makes us allow it, well, that's. You know, that's that, but I think that's a separate conversation that shouldn't really be factored into. Us taking a look at our codes and fixing them and making them, you know, really fit us better. The other thing, and you know, I don't know if I'll get booed out of the room on this one, and that is, why isn't our problem? That we have to worry about the developers making money? I I actually, I'm not worried about them making money, you know, I. I just, I I feel that a developer should come in here and do the right thing by their neighbor, by the neighbors. And by, you know, how our town is. I'm not worried about them making money. They can't make money. Then maybe, you know, somebody else will come in, buy a house and renovate it, which might make more sense.
Well, the the issue though, council member, is that when. You know, in in a lot of households, the property is their most valuable asset. And so when when they, you know, for example, when older people, I mean, I remember. Uh, one of my neighbors who who is violently opposed to any kind of regulation. Like they're like, uh, restrict a builder from building a big house. And and you know, he was retiring and he wanted to maximize, he he wanted to maximize. The the value of his house, which was torn down, and he was worried that if the town. Impose all these restrictions, then the value of the of the land would go down. So that's 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 one of the issues. It's not that.
You know, Jeffrey, that would be interesting to hear what our town residents think. Do they think our buildings are too tall? Do they think that we're, that that we are devaluing their property? By 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 really having a more stringent code? I don't know. I I I kind of think.
No, I I was just giving, I was sending you an anecdote.
I get it.
And and I think that there were, there were previous council members who felt that way.
Yeah, I mean, it's like Cherry, the village of Cherry Creek doesn't even allow for tear downs, so. Um, and their values are certainly very, very high, so it's not, our value is. Where we sit, not what's on top of it.
Anyway, that's why I think we might need some help into really doing this right and not just do it piecemeal. And really have a comprehensive code, you know, code change, that's all, that's that's kind of where I sit.
All right, um, thank you for that, so that would argue for. Some sort of a study before we take action. Matt, do you have any idea how long it might take to? Put out a solicitation or a contract and have someone to study?
Sure, so I guess it would depend on a few things. Um, one would be, um. Kind of bleeds into the next items on on our agenda, you know, what what other elements of the code we would want looked at. And then I guess it would depend on the nature of the study. Kind of what what information would the council want that would be helpful for you to move forward and to feel confident in? Making the right decision. Um, if we wanted to contract with an architect, that's if we gave them. Three, four, five different potential codes and say, can you? Can you look at ten different properties and show what you would have designed if this was? The case on all these properties instead of what was built, or if we wanted to hire a a. An urban planner who gave a more, um. Narrative description and may and perhaps some prescriptive measures to. Continue that type of character in the neighborhood in in the buildings. Um, I think, and Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's been. The approach that some of our neighbors have taken if and when they did these types of studies is. To hire an an urban planner that does kind of a townwide evaluation of existing structures and. Gives a report back to the council or a working group.
Yeah, that's right, Town of Chevy Chase. Martin's additions. Hired an urban planner. Chris Jakubiak, who did a study. Came up with a presentation recommendations and helped write the code. Chevy Chase Village used an architect to perform a similar service. And then. Chevy Chase View had Chris Jakubiak help with a a character study, but ultimately. The code was not comprehensively amended based on that because. The. The the neighborhood was almost equally split. Yes, in favor of regulations or opposed to regulations for some of the reasons that have been mentioned tonight. And, um. And then some other towns. Have just looked at what the larger towns have done through their processes and adopted their own. Regulations based on the the work of some of the larger towns. Including, I think, section. Three and five. And Garrett Park, I believe. And and the town of Glen Echo. But I think, but they just regulate ADUs. Perhaps I'm giving you more information than you asked for, I apologize.
So.
I appreciate the full response.
Yeah, virtue.
You know, as as I look at this, the chart on the the building night report, I know what Robin highlighted is. The only approach that would have perhaps had a. Significant impact on a number of houses built in Somerset within Mark's edition. Building height approach, that height approach is a. An approach that is inherently reflective of. A neighborhood. It's established building height is supposed to establish building line. You know, we're talking about a number of things that interest the building code, but I. Personally would be fine adopted Mark's edition of. Approach. And as with a number of our codes, if a builder wanted to build it higher than that. Which would cost a variance, then we discussed it.
Well, so I think that, I think that, um, you know, I thought the Mars edition code was interesting. Because. It seemed like they had, you know, some sort of clause based on established building height already, which I think is really important in our neighborhood because. You know, if you look out the street on on Cumberland, all the houses are pretty tall for the most part, you know. But then you look on Greystone and the houses all have a very different element to that. So to say like, oh, let's just cap it here. On as like one height, when you're sitting on Greystone. And you know, your height is going to be capped pretty high next to your house. And so, you know, regardless, you know, because someone's going to come in, they're going to make a two-story, maybe two, you know, a two-story with tall ceilings, let's call it, and then attic. And so that's going to feel very overpowering on that house versus, you know, maybe depending on where you sit in Cumberland. If you add that house, it might not. But I think that the whole, I mean, I I I agree that, you know, there we should have something like that because I think all of those houses on the streets that have the. The more, you know, ranch style mid-century homes are all very vulnerable to houses coming in and being built around them that are very tall, yeah. And so I think that on the, you know, holistically approaching it, looking at the. The percentage of lot coverage. Two would help for that, um, you know, that's kind of later in here, but to see. You know, it would be interesting because there are a couple of different things in the works, because I've only been involved with this for like a couple of years. It seems to me that there are more developers buying the land and houses now, perhaps, and tearing them down versus. You know, ten years ago, it was, you know. My next door neighbors, Meredith and Brian Davis, and they they bought a lot and they worked with someone and they bought a builder and they were the ones that came through. And, you know, asked for variances and stuff, it wasn't these builders. Um, and so I don't know if that that trend is changed. Um, to become a developer, but as Robin states. You know, that trend changing really impacts what we get as like a result in terms of the houses that are built based on the fact that they want to maximize the entire square footage block. In order to make pure gigantic profits. Um, but. So looking at it more in terms of like a coverage thing of like, okay, we started our houses. Our, you know, our coverage is only X percent and now our coverage on these houses is so great because we we don't count the. Driveways and the patios and the porches and the bay windows and the this and the that, and we don't count any of that stuff as the extra. So what happens is you get this giant house and then they get all the extras on there too. And then they build a garage and all of that, so I think that looking at that is going to help. Um, you know, perhaps alleviate some of the height thing, I don't, you know, that doesn't change height, I guess, but I think it all should be looked at.
Right, I think it should all be what that. I'm just concerned that if we tried to look at everything. We're postponing any actions for more than a year.
Right, so I think that the coverage should be done quickly, like.
And you're saying the coverage, okay.
Or.
We stopped building height.
Well, I lot coverage and building height could be done quickly, I don't know that we need to get a. Consultant, in my opinion.
Yeah. Um, were you?
Yeah, I mean, I I I was here as a proposal of established building height and I do see it as the one that makes difference, so yes, I think established building height, if we're going to do something. Um, short term, that's the way to go. Montgomery County already limits building coverage, I think, to thirty five percent in previous.
But I don't think it, I don't know, do do these houses just fall through the cracks, like I don't.
They haven't been approved, but but I mean, I think, I mean, it depends on the size of the lot, you know, so thirty five percent on a on a larger lot gives you a larger house. You know, thirty five percent on a smaller lot gives you a smaller house, so.
Yeah, I just look at like, there's a house right now in Drummond, you know, that's being built and they've got, and they, you know, they only follow Montgomery County for the most part. Um, and they've got this little sliver of grass that's like in the middle of their garage and. You know, their giant house and their accessory units and and stuff and it, I mean. I I I think the thirty five percent, I guess, are, you know, the difference must really come in those front setbacks. Um, and the side setbacks. Perhaps like.
I mean, remember, we've already limited them. So that we don't allow bay windows and balconies and whatever other strange structures, they all have to be part of the the house itself. And they need a variance or waiver for anything like that now.
Um, but it's the porches and yeah, it's it's not that, I don't, I mean, bay windows, like, not really that big of a deal, in my opinion, like. It's 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 the porch next to the patio, next to the driveway that goes to the back garage that was never there. And that is a problem with stormwater management. So, you know, it's not just because we don't want to see like, you know, cement. Um, as neighbors or whatnot, it goes to the whole stormwater management, which is what we're holistically trying to improve in our town so that. We're not sitting here being flooded, you know, with a hurricane that hits us like LA in, you know, two years. But that it's it's, that's the part that I don't, that the map of the thirty five percent isn't making sense for me, that all the stuff is allowed to go into these lots. Like that. And, you know, it it seems very overwhelming, like not thirty five percent, like fifty.
It's the actual coverage is is like fifty when you look at and you put the driveway.
Yeah.
Porch, you put. Garage, I think the garage, like the county code only counts like fifty percent or something in terms of lot coverage.
Yeah.
Lots of these little rules and exceptions.
Right, right, and so, you know, to me, it would be good to tighten up those exceptions that Montgomery County clearly doesn't. Tighten.
But I I agree. But I think that becomes a more. Potentially substantial change to. Building code. And and. A study might be a benefit to inform the council's actions, and so you might recommend. One approach over another, because there are many different ways to try to. For lack of a better word, to to achieve a more balanced. Harmonious home design. But but I think we could. So so what I'm. I'm suggesting here is that. We ask the town manager and town council. To prepare a draft code amendment for us to on building height to adopt something like Martin's Edition. That we would discuss at the next board session. And we'd ask the town manager, town staff. To develop a recommendation for study for. That would look more holistically at at home, so lot coverage. And at the walls. Wall spacing, wall ties. And the height. So maybe we want to tweak something, but but I like the Mars edition approach, I think. And as as you said, Shane, that. It would allow different streets to. Maintain certain. Appearance.
Well, per our rules, if three of you want the town attorney to draft such. An amendment. I I think that's a great idea to have a baseline. To begin all the discussions. Because I think you need to start with something instead of just all these other great ideas.
Right, I'm I'm just concerned there are so many different aspects you go down, we could tire ourselves on that.
Yeah, I think I think it's a good idea to start with something, I mean, maybe it'll be radically changed. If you ever pass it, but at least you start with something. So you can have a discussion.
Okay, so. Just to move us along, is there. Interest or willingness to 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 proceed down that parallel path? From from the, I guess, Debbie? Or are you concerned this is moving too fast?
Don't get to unmute.
All right, no, that's fine, I I I I agree with that.
Okay, so does the town attorney, okay, does the town attorney understand what you want?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, in ordinance imposing a maximum height requirement similar to Martin's additions.
And then you you said a proposal. For a consultant analysis on. Building slash lot coverage.
Right, so you're asking the staff to write like an RFP?
Or I could.
I just didn't need to be forty RFP, just because, just. Maybe to describe what are the different study options in a little more detail and provide. References to what some other towns jurisdictions in the area have done. And then. At the next meeting, we could provide you, the council could provide you with more specific guidance. On which you could then, okay, do an RFP.
Great.
That's one thing. Super, we're moving along, thank you all, okay. Um. Next item, other building code requirements, we'll just take a quick look at that, but I think we can talk about. Kind of blend into that.
Yeah, yeah, I I I had included the other elements, driveways, wall planes, pools, I I think the general consensus was. Priority was was the height and then the building lot coverage, but. Um, if you also wanted to look at specific driveway, like the wall plane is. Kind of a an interesting, um. Code requirement, and then if we wanted anything specific to pools, I did kind of a short analysis of that for you.
I'm happy to have us just. On on our own review of these references and. That be prepared to. Discuss them as part of the. A study that we've asked. Uh, the town manager and staff to make some recommendations on. All right, okay, neighbor notifications. Uh, there's, we've been discussing this a little bit, town leadership about. Formalizing this into a code amendment. Just make a perfect third, everyone that. The town will. Will notify residents.
Well, well, here, but you did describe it. Okay, this this is a little more complicated issue, so right now. Um. And and I'll let the town attorney correct me if I say it, so right now, we basically have a notice requirement. So that when. So that so that so that surrounding neighbors, and it's all defined, right, it's like. The next door neighbors and the across the street neighbors. Uh. They they, the applicant is required. To notify them, and I think what the code says, they're supposed to get them sign to sign a sheet. So so that that was a great idea a hundred years ago when people knew their neighbors. And and when people weren't afraid. Of of people coming to their house and and when people were in town all the time and what have you. But but. But what's developed over the years is that it's become. It it's people have misunderstood what what it what it means, it's really just a note, it's really to to take, and I don't even know if it says what's required. Uh, for the applicant to take. Right, maybe it's just the application, I don't know, so all this needs to be defined because, like, Council of RAB has brought up all these good ideas about how the neighbor really needs to see. Certain documents that maybe we don't require. Um, but but, um. The the there there's there's so many resulting problems, like, first of all, we don't have a definition of what the neighbor is. So is the neighbor the homeowner? Is the na- eh eh, do we want, do we want the owner of record of the property, but also the the, uh, if it's a tenant occupied property. They have an interest in such an application. And so I think we we definitely need to define, uh, um. That, I think we have to make it clear that this is a notice requirement, it's not an approval, I think what what's come to pass now is that people think. Applicants think that they go to the so-called neighbors and they and they go to the neighbor, the neighbor, um. You know, let's say the neighbor is totally opposed to having this go on, then then. And and the neighbor thinks that by signing the paper that they're agreeing to the, and that's not what it is, so so to me. Eh eh and and I think that, you know, in the past, the idea was that you would encourage. Discussion between the the applicant and. And the area of residence, but that that's that's like a nineteen fifties kind of idea. You know, that's not how the world is today. And so when somebody comes to their door, and and a lot of times it's not even the app, it's somebody that works for a developer and they just want to get the thing signed and they don't, they don't want to talk about it, they don't. So to me, I think that we we need, I think we should change it, so the burden is totally on. The the town staff to make sure that all the information. Is provided to the 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 neighbor, the the. The surrounding owners. And and the occupants. But also what the these projects, these these applications have an impact on way more than just the neighbors. So so maybe there should be another way that they're publicized that that meets this original grade, this was a great idea. This was a great idea, but over the years, too many complications have developed, so we have to refine.
Well, and also, I mean, it goes back to what I was saying, that ten years ago, the neighbors did go and knock on the doors, you know, and and now it's not neighbor, it's not individuals as much as it seems to maybe perhaps be developers and it's different.
Right, and even when even when it was, even when it was someone, um. Redoing the house that they're living in. They would, they would, um. Have their architect or somebody, their builder go. So what do you all think? I mean. And and then and then, uh, another idea that's come up is that the town convene a meeting. And there has to be a lot of caveats to it, as the town attorney has mentioned before, that that there be some kind of meeting between the staff. The applicant and any resident who's interested to get their questions answered in advance of it coming to a hearing. And we we tried that. We tried that on a pilot basis on a couple of applications over the years, I don't think, since all of you, the council, but. But there was some opposition to that.
Um, I think I agree with you that I think the town should take over this function, um, on, I think, notice should be set to both the. Um, occup- the resident on the property and the owner of the property, if the owner is not the resident, um.
Um, occup- the resident on the property and the owner of the property, if the owner is not the resident um. And uh. That's it. Debbie, any comments?
I I think definitely the the town should take it over and it it should be standardized. I'd like to hear what, you know, how Matt sees it. He may not be able to say that tonight, but. He comes up with a system that works. One of the things when I was reading the materials, it said something about. You know, you can come, you know, that we have to give paper out, you know, it sounded like we'd have to like. Hand out plans. I think this really has to all be online. And if if a, eh eh let's say my neighbors are building, then it's incumbent upon me. To go to the town hall if I want to look at the bigger plans and ask to see them. To view them, but to hand out. Plans to everybody is that is ridiculous. I don't know if that was really the intent from what I read. I. I wasn't sure. But yes, take it over, Matt. Go for it.
Now, another issue that needs to be addressed is one that Council of Rowback continuously brings up is that. Is that oftentimes in these complicated applications, there are many different iterations of what the plan is. So somehow we have to put in the code. The ability for the. Either the neighbors or whomever is interested to see all those changes so that they know what their company on when the application comes to a hearing.
In in a way, I think actually this can help. Ensure that that process is done too, though it gives us another tool to say. You submitted, we've already notified the neighbors that this is it. So yes, you, if you want to change it, you can. You can pull it off next month's agenda. And it will, it will be delayed a month. Um, but this, this is the one that's been entered into the record, it's been shared with the council, that's been shared with the neighbors, and this is what's going on the agenda.
But are you all, but are all of you comfortable with the way the the code is now that it's? Just the contiguous properties, because. Because what, because one house away, that has this. That has a lot of impact. On that person too. So we don't require that. So so if if it's your house, let's say you're tearing down your house. The only people that were required to give it to is all the ones around you. These people over here. It me, they would want to know about it too. But we don't require that.
I think that like.
What do you think?
I think that in um. If if we're, you know, if we. Have enough time, you know, when, so like that, we know what these are that are coming up, and we put them into the town journal, and it goes into the newsletter and stuff as they're coming up. You know, we can certainly say, you know, to any neighbor in all of the neighborhood. Who, you know, has concerns or thoughts or whatever about this, like the information is all available with Matt. He can email you a copy or, you know, whatever it is, because, you know, you're right, there's a lot of people that are concerned about certain trees, and they don't necessarily even live on the same block.
Right.
So but I think that it's important that everyone have the information that is going out. In a timely manner. It's that last minute scramble kind of that, you know, I think is not fair to all the residents.
Well, do we need to? Do we want to write that into the uh, into the uh? The code. And have, maybe Ron can suggest something.
Or, you know, I don't know if it's like something where. We can count back like the town. You you know, to like the, when the journal comes out, and then when the announcements go out. So like that we are able to do it with. Have these addresses in. The town. Friday announcements. At least two times, or maybe at least three times, it says, you know, because what what happens in some of these instances, depending on when the fifteen falls. Is that if the fifteen falls on a Saturday, then you're not going to have that town journal until the twenty. Can't do math. Um, wha- whatever that next Friday is, is going to be the first time of that town journal going out. And so that's another, that's then maybe this twenty second, and then the town council might be that following week, or, you know, it's, it can get very.
Different.
Close when when we have it based on the fifteenth. I don't know if we want to change it to the tenth. Um. You know. I think the tenth sounds nice, but. Um, I would probably, you know, even thirty days, but like the tenth of each month, and then we can definitely, we we would be able to get in at least two announcements.
I think they have a very. I understand something.
You're on mute, Debbie.
I'm not anymore.
You don't have to mute yourself.
I'm unmuted.
I don't think you need to mute yourself.
Say that again?
You don't need to mute yourself.
Well, I'm not alone here, and I, there's a little bit of other noise, so that's why I muted me.
Oh, thank you.
Um. Um. Was going to say, I I think. We have to stick to, we're going to tell our neighbor, we're going to notify the neighbors, and then. Put it in. You know, in the town journal or the Friday announcements that say. You know, um, you know, check the um, check the website, you know, for information about. Houses being, you know, about about permits, you know, being applied for, maybe even put in the address. I don't know. But I think if we have to worry about telling everybody. You know, besides the adjacent people, we could really be opening a can of worms. So, my two cents.
I think it becomes logistically exhausting for the town staff to have.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And unrealistic, I think.
But I I'm also happy to adopt. Uh, Shannon's suggestion and just. Move in the timeline up. A nominal five days to the tenth of the month instead of the fifteenth proceeding, the. Council meeting, just to get more time to. Get the word out. For people to notice that that this is happening so that they can engage if they want to.
I'm I'm not against that, but no, that means that about, on average, fifteen percent of applicants will have to wait another month. Before they can submit their application, and that's additional costs for whoever it is that's doing that. So that is.
That's true.
As long as we accept that that is that, and we know that, and still want to vote for it, I'm fine, but just know that. Uh, Debbie, your mute.
I'll just suck the car out.
Yeah, but I think that's, I think that that's totally fine, and I think that um. That, you know, a lot of times. It sometimes, uh, you know, people wait till the last second to get their stuff in, and then there's not a lot of time to. For people to see it, so I think this will help with that.
You know, I mean. They advertise widely that we're changing to the tenth. I think most people will be able to rearrange their schedules to make it for the tenth.
Yeah. So. I mean, Montgomery County takes forever. To approve these things right now, and so um. You know. Our little portion of that is. Nothing compared to the. Time it takes for it to go through the county.
Debbie, what do you think of? Moving the fifteenth to the.
I I think this, I think it's 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 actually fine. You know, I think we can try it. Doesn't work, we we tr- we turn it around. But I I think it's a good idea. If we can make it happen.
So what are this, still waiting up, you're, what do you want?
What I, what I'm hearing is that I could work with the town attorney to have a code. Uh, amendment. Or an ordinance. Ready for the next work session that incorporates language, so the town is responsible for informing residents and the council. And that the deadline for submission of applications is on the tenth of the month.
But you also want to uh uh approve the definition of of uh. Name.
Is it the same paper now?
Well, cur- currently, it says, currently, it actually says that the occupant that the, let me just. Pull back up. I believe it says that the owner and. Provided.
The occupants.
Adjoining the confronting property and to the occupants of said property if the owners are not occupants. So I think that that that's kind of in line with what Councilmember Bar was saying.
Well, maybe we change that when we rewrite the code. That.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's right, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So that that that's basically if you're not a coroner, six property left. Around you.
Yes, but you don't want to expand, you don't want to expand at all the. The uh. Definition of an adjacent property. You want to add another layer. Debbie wants to do that, okay.
I I think we're addressing that part. Such providing.
Better.
I think, but as as you and other folks have noted, there are a lot of residents who are. Interested in and concerned about what's what's happening. With these properties, so. We do want to get the word out.
So. The one thing that you didn't really decide if you want to include is the idea of having a. Prehearing meeting. You want to put in the code that there will be a prehe- that the that the the town manager could convene. A prehearing meeting between the uh. Applicant and any interested neighbor. Any interested resident. I. You you, I mean, do you not, I mean. I mean, I mean, the, remember, the whole purpose of this from the beginning was to encourage. The applicant to work out with.
Yeah.
The surrounding citizens in advance. So do you want to take that extra step? Instead of having that. Potentially have to happen at the, at the hearing. That it would happen in advance, so you wouldn't have to be in involved with that.
So I I think.
Back and forth.
So I think that um, I think that that's definitely. Part of it and should happen, and um. But. I think that, you know, part of the struggle is like. You know, these neighbors aren't really giving these full plans, and they don't know when they come in and all that stuff, so I think that if Matt were to. To set it up so that he sends it out, and so that a neighbor knows that I can look at the plan, and then, you know, on it. Is um, the developer or, you know, the owner, the owner of the house's information, and that we encourage um. We encourage. Conversations. And if you have problems, like to reach out to the, to the owner um. And, you know, all all of that stuff before, but I think it's more just making sure that the, the people really truly have the correct. Information and whether or not that's been sent to them. And um, there's all sorts of things on Montgomery County's website in terms of. You know. Trying to facilitate kind of. Communication between um, the builder and the and the developer. Um.
Me neither.
And the new neighbors, yeah, yeah, and talks about that, and talks about like water qua- quantity, and. To have a conversation with the the owner who's making the changes, and they they do talk a lot about that, but I think it's just. No, number one, knowing that it's coming up. And then, number two, making sure that you have the right information is really important.
And this also goes back a little bit to the core of the idea. For the welcome letter. Which was that. That builders and new new people would get to be. The other citizens to learn. What their, what their issues were, like. Don't build a big house here. And don't build a house where the water's going to flood my basement, you know. So that was the whole idea of them. The whole idea. Of the welcome letter was so that. People that wanted to make changes to their properties. Would know from before they even designed. What were the concerns of the community? And we could never. Get that approved. That that's. That's what would really be the the goal. It goes back to all these other issues we've talked about, right? What kind of community you want, you know, what kind of town you want this to be? So, and most of us would like it to stay the way it is.
I'm trying, I think I'm a little more cynical than you, Mr. Mayor, but uh. I have seen little. Says zero. Inclination avoidance on the part of. Tear down. On tractors.
Yeah.
Who are not actually residents of this town. Hearing about anything that any resident of the town says.
They don't, but.
So.
But what.
Town meeting, the town letter is not quite a good idea, that's what's in our town code.
They don't, but I will say, maybe from experience. Um, they can find other neighbors annoying, and the other neigh, you know, so when the neighbors know, and the neighbors are asking them questions. They have to answer, or they, you know, I mean, they should answer and all of those things. But until you know what's going on as that neighbor, like, because a lot of times those houses get sold, and you don't know anything for seven, eight months, and then think. It's like, oh, guess what? There's a five-story house going in, and um, it's going to be on the agenda in a week and a half. And you're like, huh? So um, short of just like stopping trucks outside someone's house every time they come up, which is another way to do it, um, you know. You can. I think that people will be better informed now. Having the information kind of set to them, and then they, they absolutely, I think we should encourage them to discuss. The plans with the builders. Or the owners.
Yeah, so they can change it before they come here and then have to be forced to change it.
Yeah, and like, just make sure, like, you know, ask the questions and. Take them through, you know, what's going on with the plan, and um. You know, the builders. Might kind of get annoying, but um, you know, it is an important part, because these houses are close together, and it does matter to the residents and.
Absolutely. I I think we're we're in agreement. I'm just a little. Uh. Chated on. The efficacy of some. Engagement.
Right, yes, yes, they, yes.
But but. That doesn't mean it's not worth trying, and not absolutely support. Getting the information out.
Yeah.
More time to understand what's happening. There should be no. Surprises about what's going in.
Right.
Uh, to any lot in some sense.
Yeah.
Okay. Um.
Oh, and like, um, in one of the ones that you had shown about that building. Percentage, they were talking about like the driveway couldn't be, oh, it was in the driveway one. It was like a driveway couldn't be super close to the setback, and, you know, there are other interesting things like that, that kind of. Um. You know. Uh, it's all different ways of. Looking at this house coverage.
Yeah.
And what counts as house coverage.
Right. So and I think that the study. Could help. You know, explore the impacts of a range of different options and how that would change what houses look like, and the council decide whether or not we want to take better action about. Regardless. And I should say, it also give more time for. Residents of the town to. And to to weigh in on this important topic, you know.
Before we move on, I did just want to highlight, and I I'm sorry you were already aware of this, but. Wrapped up in the neighbor notification, kind of the same but different, was something that's come up at several hearings related to the removal of town trees.
Absolutely. You just make a pardon. Does anybody have any questions or issues with? Formally notified residents about town tree removals? No, it it makes sense. It will make you happy. Go and talk.
But, well, well, that was um, but what uh, what else was it about? The notification that you wanted. I think you're already doing it, but we wanted. You wanted to put it in the code, but what are the? Is it just the same as the building applications, or is there something else?
More or less the same. I think the idea was just to make sure that the adjoining or confronting neighbors to a tree that's being removed. Are notified ahead of time and not just at the council meeting, so that they're specifically given a notice that. The town, the town arborist has identified that, you know, X tree is hazardous for the following reasons, and is is recommending its removal at. Such and such council meeting. Uh, if you have any questions, reach out to the town hall. Et cetera, et cetera.
So uh. When there, do we, do we, what is our code say about? Uh. The application uh, process in terms of posting. Does it's, you know, you. Does it, you know, do we require? Do we require like the county does that? The when there's an application pending that it be posted when when there's the building permit has been approved? I think Ron, I think Ron's.
Not on on that point, Mr. Mayor, and I'm looking up that now, but I just. Wanted to mention that related to this question is. If we're going to amend the code to provide that residents are going to receive notice before action is taken on right away trees. And related to that is, should there be notice with respect to trees proposed for planting? As Councilmember Kumar commonly enquires. And then secondly, if we if we put in the code. That residents are to receive notice. Either in the maintenance or planting situations. What rights are we giving the neighbors? Are we setting up an expectation that they would be able to come to a council member, I'm sorry, council meeting? And provide comments on what the town is, on what the town is proposing, or are we just?
Absolutely.
Going to clarify in the code that it's for informational purposes. Thank you.
So wait a minute, before you talk about trees. So we don't require that the property be posted when an application is made, right? The way and the county does that, right? The county does.
For for building permits now or or trees, Mr. Mayor?
No, for building permits. Doesn't the county, like, when there's an application? For. Change, you know, when there's a building application, doesn't the county require a posting? All we require is the posting after the building permit is approved. Because it has to have the number that we will require all of something, who to call if there's a problem. But why don't we require that, because that would get to the notice that that would be another way to notify. The citizens, because they drive by and they would see, because it doesn't, the county require that.
I have to look that up, Mr. Mayor. I believe the county requires a copy of the permit to be posted.
Yeah, they they put like, you know, a plaque up or whatever.
Yeah, they didn't advocate because because it's required when the people got an accessory unit. So why don't we require that?
But you can't see, you can't see the permit unless you trespass on the property, frankly. But if you are seeking a variance, then notice of the variance has to be prominently posted.
It's very vague. It says like a permit has been applied for and it goes until X date or something like that.
I know, but but then people, then if you if you drove by, you saw, then you would call the town hall. You have the info. The same, the same with the tree. I think that if it's. I think one of the things that Councilmember Kumar was suggesting was that. And and some others have suggested in the past that when a tree, when there's going to be a change in the status to a tree. Then it'd be posted on the tree.
That's happening now, though.
But that's not required in our code.
Word, but it is being like, it says.
I know, but I think you, and then and then I think also another thing that a resident wanted years ago was. Once the decision is made about the tree, that that it be posted when it's going to be. Taken down. Remember when? The resident Essex came in. So I think that's another issue, you know, obviously we're not deciding stuff tonight, but. Do we want, and and we could ask Councilmember Kumar about that. But remember that was the, that was one of the issues was. That the residents, the citizens wanted to know when the tree was, you know, in advance. So they could, because I think he was worried that there'd be noise when he was having Zoom and all that. So do you want to? You don't have to decide tonight, but do you want to put that in the code? That has to be required to go soon.
Yeah, I mean, I like, I work from home. A lot of people work from home and like, so if a tree's coming down right by my house, I definitely want to know because it's going to be loud.
Um, I think with our town website, we could probably. Very easily have a standard area where information is posted on. Tree removals, tree plantings, EFCO installation.
You know, the people are gonna, no, but the people need to see, I think people need to see it on the tree. So they know they're not going. Like, has her rollback isn't going to be like looking every minute, is the tree, am I? So if she sees it on the tree, then she'll adjust her schedule that day.
Well, yeah.
She'll have her meeting down town.
Even today, their notice is put up and says, you know, don't park here because we're going to be removing the tree.
Right.
So hopefully there are clues. I'm just looking.
But we don't, but we don't know that, but that's not required. They might put it up and do you want to put it in the code?
Personally, no, I. I I think it's enough to say that we will notify the neighbors just for once without. Right. Specifying every step of it. Although I think it's a good idea to post on the tree and that could be part of our standard process. But that's my thought.
Operations of what the town does without being in the code.
Well, Debbie, did we lose you or are you still there?
She just told me that she had to turn off her camera for a little bit, but I think she's still around.
Okay. What do you think?
Shannon, but she's still.
Yes, Councilmember. If you want to ask her. Oh, Devin, yeah, just what what do you think of?
I'm here. I'm I'm sorry. I'm actually on vac, I'm actually on vacation. And I'm, other things pulling at me right now. Um, you know.
Other than going on. Get that dinner on the table.
Yeah, I I that's exactly right. Um, I'm. I'm not into spoon feeding, but I get it. I I I am, I think we should let people know with a sign by the tree, but not a note to every everybody around the tree. You know, and then I think if you want more information, you look on our our website. Maybe that's what our signs say.
I think we're in general agreement that that's good information and a good way to provide it. Uh, one question though is. How much of that needs to be specified in the town code or could it just be part of? The the town operations and Robin and I lean towards. Keeping the town code at a slightly higher level where we would just indicate that we need to notify the neighbors. But we would start to formalize things and we'll see if that doesn't work and people are still upset because you're not getting enough information, well then. We can tighten things up more.
So when you decided tonight is to ask the town attorney to draft. Language so that. Trees are to be. Action on trees has to be, action on trees is going to, it's the same requirements as actions with a building application. Is that what you asked him?
On town trees, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Is it just hand tree? Yes, yeah.
Well, private trees would, the the notice would be applicable anyway.
Yeah.
You know, today I got a notice from one of my neighbors asking me to send an email saying that she gave me notice. That two of her trees in her backyard might need to come down. So what were her rules? You know, why did she have to tell me that? I live across the street.
Yeah, that that that's that's the same ones, like a building permit. Currently, the applicant has to notify all the neighbors surrounding their house. So that was her way of. Getting your signature. So in the future, she would. Submit an application and you receive a notice from the town that says so and so has applied to remove. The following trees on their property and for the following reasons, da da da, da da da. A hearing will be held at the following council meeting to be held at such and such o'clock at the town hall. Here's a link. If you have any questions or wish to speak to town arborists. Please give us a call at this number during town office. Uh, or if you'd like to speak to the applicant about their decision, here's their contact information.
Okay.
But does it say, do we change, Mr. Town Attorney, do we change the code so? Right now. A neighbor can notify another neighbor by email? Isn't it still required in the code that it be in a piece of paper? I don't think we changed.
The the code does not. Specify the per, I'm sorry, the method. Let me pull up the exact language.
But if we're going to change it, so so we should make sure that the town can do it by electronic.
Okay.
It does say that actually. Make it electronic.
No, doesn't say that, okay.
This is twenty first century.
Yeah, I'm glad. But years ago, then before we did read it. Okay, it's special. Next topic is gift policy. Okay, so to just give a little bit of history, so. I guess maybe it was ten years ago that we. The, and this was spearheaded by former councillor Fred Appeal. A gift policy was written and you've all, I think, received a copy of what it is. And basically. What it was decided was that the only gifts that would be accepted. Would be what's on that on that policy, which I think is just. A pet. The pet disposal, is that right? The pet disposal and and.
Yeah.
And more.
Plants, trees, benches.
Yeah, that, so, so. So just to go over some of the history of why we did that was because there had been three gifts. There were were a problem. The first is the. The well-known batting cage. Which basically was some residents, you didn't want it anymore, so they basically dumped it on the town. And there was no process. It 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 was, it wasn't like a need was identified. And then in addition to that, there there was no discussion about what would happen. So it's fine to accept the gift and say, we accept the gift, and then when the gift is no longer functioning, that's it, and it's not going to be replaced. But instead, we 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 held on to this idea that we're, now it's a town facility and we have to keep throwing money at it. So so how old is that batting cage now?
Well, we got a new one, maybe two years ago.
And nobody's using it. Okay, the next thing is, then, then, and and this next one was when we got the piano, which I was one of the donors of this piano, right? So, so, so we got, so. So, uh, so residents on Essex wanted to get rid of a nice piano. And so, and then I think I paid to have it too. And then it sat in here. The only, only, the only person that used it was Councilmember Picard when she had a recital, right? And then the other, and then all the people that rented the room, you know, they didn't, they didn't want it in here. Plus, plus, there were all these rules that you, you know, we didn't want it damaged and and. So finally, somehow the council, we finally got the council to to agree here. And then another, another. Gift problem was, which I was involved in, is the, you know, that bench at the entrance to Dorset. So. And that was. We, there was no process, so, so that was done when my neighbor Alice Roman died and her daughter. Wanted to donate this bench, right? And I think I helped, I think we raised money for it, I think I helped pay for it. And and Corey Morrissey decided where we go, so there was, there was no process. And then, and then, you know, it, we didn't even buy, it it. It fell into disrepair, then there were complaints about the flowers and so, so my thing is that if if we're. If we want to have a gift policy, we need to write one that's. That's comprehensive and includes what is the future, you know, for example. So the bench was donated to the town and we, and the council accepted it. So that means it's a fixture and and the citizens have an expectation that that bench is a, like a. Same like the batting cage, it's a public facility. So now it's, so now it's in one of the functions of the town. So so we, so we need to write the policy that. That if if the gift is going to be accepted, that we accept the gift as as is. And then once it's no longer usable, it'll be, it'll be removed and that'll be the end of it. Or 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 the the donor can also. Have a fund to support, you know, the batting gauge or the bed.
And you know, and you know, or or the council takes over the function.
Yeah, right, right, but. But it's, see, what what are the problems with the with the, that that last gift that we didn't accept? You know, you wrote in the notes that the council accepted, it wasn't, it wasn't accepted. We just said you could accept it, but. Because, so the problem with that is that. In my view, there was no process, because what if, what if some other people in the town wanted a different toy over there? Then nobody knew what the condition of it was. And what happens if it broke? You know what I'm saying? I mean, I know it's kind of funny, but this is like a serious thing. And what and what if other residents didn't want? It have the noise from the foos, I'm just saying that, you know, this is a public decision and there needs to be a process, that's all.
Executives coming coming to you because they've got the plot of a comedy scenario.
But we just, I mean, how do we know? We, you all hadn't even seen this foosball table.
I heard it was a period.
But it's your fiduciary duty to at least see a picture of it, get the specifications and value.
So I would argue that council spent more time talking about foosball table than a brand new foosball table is worth.
That's true.
I do, I do agree, though, that there should be, the life of the gift should be, you know, some sort of. Um, clause, because you're right, like, you know. If the foosball table breaks, it shouldn't be the responsibility of the town to then. Just supply another foosball table because that's.
Except there's now an expectation, you've accepted this gift, so it's now like a function of the town to provide foosball.
Well, right, but I mean, that that's what I'm saying. If you add in, like, you know, it goes for a clause, like, until it's broken or something, and then you decide what to do with it or, you know.
Why it makes sense to say unless the council takes action to accept it as a. Facility, in which case we're taking responsibility for it at that point.
Right.
But we, if you put that clause in, it means no, it's not a town responsibility unless the council does.
Right, right.
So in terms of, I see a hand raised, Debbie?
Thank you. Um, I I I think when it comes to these kinds of things, I think the foosball table is a great example. I think someone's got to go over and look at it, make a decision. It's one thing, you know, what somebody on the on the pool committee goes, it's a great table. You know, all we know is coming from a good home. That's nice, but somebody's got to go over and look at it and make a decision because it could be. Something that's really not appropriate for us. It could be, you know, maybe it's, um, it's not safe. You know, maybe it has splinter kind of things. I don't know.
Right.
But I just think we do have to eyeball something if we're thinking of accepting it. That's all.
That's good, so. What's the record?
Well, can Ron, okay. Ron, you think you can write, write something about it? There definitely needs to be, I mean, for example, with the foosball table, what if there are other residents that wanted a different kind of toy there or? An extra, I don't, you know, I'm just saying.
Air hockey.
Air hockey. Sure, they can get it. But there just needs to be a process. I mean, there was no process. It's just one councillor requested we put it on there. Nobody had seen it, but they didn't, you you were here, right?
No, I was here.
Okay, but remember in the end, you didn't, the council did not accept the gift. The town manager.
Oh, right.
Who managed it. We told him that he would just let it, you know. But so basically, when the season's over, if the thing isn't worth anything, Matt can tell him to take it away. And why should we pay for, you know, it's, for example, let's say you accepted the gift and it broke, then we have to pay, then we have to pay, Debbie removed. Or nobody knows you're supposed to pay, I mean, it's hard, you know, if we accept the gift, then we own it.
So we, I mean.
And then if it broke, then we have to pay.
The clause really doesn't need to be, we accept the gift, but unless council accepts. Authority for the, or test responsibility for the gift, then um it is. The ma- the the responsibility of the owner of property. And if we can do that, I think we probably better covered.
Well, right now legally, that that foosball table belongs to. Uh, the person that. Put it there.
Yes.
And 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 legally, Matt allowed him to put it there. And so Matt can tell him to take it away.
Now we just put that in code and ask them to belong, using language well proper, what I said.
So, 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 so basically just update the existing policy. To add something, even if it's just a check, check mark that says. Uh when you're, when you're gifting, when you're proposing a gift to the town. Is the town is responsible for maintenance and replacements. And they can either choose to not ask that or choose to ask that and the council can accept that, is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah, I mean, it, right, it it. It is, yes, functionally the same, it it just underlines that. They are responsible for it unless council.
So we might, this isn't real, is this a code change or is this to change in that form, that donation?
Just a change in the policy. Do you want the council to re- to be reviewing all proposed donations at a council meeting?
No, because that means that we could be seen as responsible for it. Um, we only review it if we're gonna take over responsibility.
Um, yeah, but who's gonna decide whether we give?
Yeah, you've got to review it to decide if we want to take responsibility, do you want to turn it over to Matt to accept all this?
Yes.
Well, why don't, why don't. Why don't uh Matt and the and the uh town, towns, town attorney and I try to come up with some language and then we'll bring it back.
Another one is it cannot, it's not a memorial gift, if any gift, it's.
Right, right.
Memorial. Final point is, we need to do something different for money, we've already had a money gift, which was a memorial gift, I think we need a policy for money too.
So, Ron, do you have any experience with the other towns you uh you work with? About money gifts that are provided?
Yes, I believe the town of Chevy Chase has an application in form. Which provides the the requisite notice for tax purposes, how the donor. Should report their donation. Other than that.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on that bit, but by the way, so that, that twenty thousand dollar gift, that's just sitting in a, in in our account.
Yeah, we need to find a way to spend it, you know.
We have, we have to, um.
Have foosball maintenance.
We will, we will bring that, we will bring that to. Because, because I don't know what the big, what the request said or anything, so.
Losing volume as inflation continues, so we should do it quickly.
Do very road evaluation, I know that the Public Safety Committee has raised. A number of questions or provided commentary on that evaluation, can can you?
Yes.
Evaluation and maybe address some of those questions and comments?
Yeah, since that's kind of the most pressing one, I just really quickly, just on stormwater, just to note that we do have all the signatures. So we can move ahead with that, so I just wanted to give that update to the council and I wanted to thank um. Well, council member Barr and also Julie Greenberg, who offered some assistance in getting. A couple last signatures on that. Um, okay, so then as far as the Duberry evaluation, I can actually share my screen really quickly that shows I I met with them. Uh, today, um. All right, I'm not gonna waste time, I don't know why it's not letting me uh share my screen, but um. We went over their uh their reports, in addition to the report. They have a data set uh for us that they shared and that I can also share with um. With any committee committees, committee members or residents that are interested in it. Um, it breaks it down further than what's just in the report. I think one of the main takeaways for me is actually that our roads, the condition of them are in better shape than what I thought. Over eighty-six percent of our roads are in excellent condition. Now, the the complicated factor and one of the things that I talked to them today that I I'd like them to. Do some follow-up evaluation on is. Um, the the curves specifically, and they also might come back to us with proposals, we'll do some uh geo. Geo thermal testing to look at concrete underneath the streets, because one of the things that we found. When we were doing some of our sidewalk fixes this past spring. On Trent Street, for instance, so uh Mr. Vasswani is probably familiar with this, there's, there's quite a few aprons. That the slope is kind of odd, when you're walking down the sidewalk, it's, it's, it's maybe a little bit awkward. But what we realized was, when you start trying to fix one, then it impacts. The sidewalk near it to bring it into ADA compliance, which then impacts the the apron next to it. Which then impacts the street in front of it, which impacts the house of property, so it it ends up being kind of a snowball effect. And so one of the things that I've asked for a little bit more analysis on is. Some of those characteristics, looking at the curves, uh Mr. Vasswani also noted some of the safety measures, um so I asked them to go back and clarify. They looked at that as well, um but. Two, so a couple of things, one is that um. I i if we'd like, I I'm ha- I'm happy to arrange for them to do a presentation of their initial findings for the council. And in any other residents that are interested, maybe, you know, during lunchtime or something someday, if we wanted to do that.
I think that's.
I know, right, I do.
Do you have other council members like they give a presentation to any town residents in there?
Okay, and then the the next, then the other element is kind of next steps and I I talked with them about helping us. Put together kind of a fi- a five to ten year plan on maintenance and thinking about it holistically with some of the things that I mentioned. That we're, you know, we're still a little ways away from that, and we definitely want to make sure we also get resident input on some of those and resident concerns on there as well. Um, but in general, I think the idea is that we we have the data now on the conditions. We now want to think about some of the more holistic elements to road, sidewalk, curb and gutter and inlet improvements. And um. And then they they're also able to help us with some of the technical aspects of writing an RFP, writing an invitation to bid and even helping us evaluate as well. Um, they said they can do some analysis on costs as well, they can help us with budgeting, things like that, so. Um, they can also help us kind of take the next step of how we put this into motion, implement a plan based on the data.
What about uh some of our streets that don't have any, any sidewalks? Is that something they look at?
We. We did look at that.
The the the, right, I mean, there is one that concerns me, which is Cumberland um on going down. Towards the Falls Park, um the four nine hundred block of Cumberland, it's not on sidewalk and it's cut. Seven lane, isn't that great, um, there, which means it's not a dead end street either. The other ones that don't have sidewalks are dead end streets and so. There's not much traffic on them, so typically, but on that one, there is traffic. And maybe we should, long term, put a sidewalk.
I I think that's a, that's a great suggestion, Ron, and that's focused, is that something that Matt can do very just? As you're talking about a five to your plan, you're willing to get sidewalks. Specifically that.
So.
I think that's a good idea about sidewalks, but I I do think that before you go down that road. Yeah, and you need to survey that those neighbors.
Like, it makes sense, but is that, it doesn't get a long term in.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I think, give the information, but make sure it's safe, it would also be good to know whether. The the uh, any of those property owners would be opposed to.
Some of them are ready to put in a little sidewalk.
Yeah.
So I don't know how this really falls in line with this all, but like. Have they looked at, I mean, were they able to kind of see what happened at the end of Fallstone with that water main break or? Um, you know, I mean, that was a pretty big buckle, um. And, you know, I don't know if how this falls into this, but. I think that we need to have WSSC come and do an evaluation of all of the streets. In our neighborhood, because we had two water mains. Yeah, well, I mean, right, underneath the, underneath the streets, I guess, because we had two water mains break. In the course of ten days. And on my understanding is that they did do that a couple of years ago on Drum End. And they did find multiple other cracks and things on that street that they've since repaired. I don't know if they've ever done one in our neighborhood, but I think it's time for them to look at that, um. Soon, hopefully.
Yep.
Um, because those are very destructive.
Yeah, and actually, that that's a good point and will will is also important information for planning purposes for too, because the last thing we want to do is. Spend, you know, a hundred thousand dollars redoing parts of a street and then WSSC to come in a year later and decide. I, we'd love to upgrade your water main and tear it all up again.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't know how to get on their timeline, I don't know like how long that would take, um.
I I, I did talk to Brandon Stewart, who's kind of the customer care person for for the local governments. He said that currently there's no plans in WSSC system. Uh, they've planned two years out, so he said, there's nothing in the next two years for Somerset.
Did you think we were just unlucky with two water main breaks?
That's what he said, that if we, that.
Infrastructure, like.
But.
Well, you know, the other problem is, is that. Yeah, so the other thing, like, you know, we did find that sinkhole that was over by Susanna's and that's, that was all, that's a water system pipe, I think. And so, I mean, I think that they need to go and and after this second one that happened. I mean, and really look at everything, so.
Well, we can also ask, un- unless the support of our um council member. For instance.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it's a county.
Yeah.
We can also write to the WSSC.
I think we're gonna want to talk more about Dubert. Hopefully you'll have some more information at the next work session.
Sure.
But this is an important topic, we haven't really busted it out fully. But I note that we're past seven thirty.
Can I just ask one random question about the sidewalks? So who, who controls the sidewalk right here?
You know, one of the sponsors?
Yeah, we do, right?
Yeah.
I have tripped over that stupid crap like three times, like, how how can we get that crack fixed? Someone had like written a whole thing that said I broke my elbow here, um there's like a really big.
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll check and I'll verify whether it's us or the county. Or state, state highway, yeah, um, I I need to double check where, where it ends.
It's right, it's right past Dorset.
Maybe it is there.
Towards Cumberland.
Okay.
And I, I know it's there and I have to put it all the time. Yeah, but so, um.
All, all verified, if it's us, we can, we can do something quick to replace, it's just one that sticks up.
Yeah.
Right, so we can either quickly replace it or put pressure on the county, state.
Okay, so did, did these people do verify that?
They actually did. I can't, I don't, I don't recall, uh, I don't think they. They did look at Wisconsin Avenue, um, so I I think that's on.
And I knew, and I know Kumar said that um. Didn't do every street.
Well, that, that actually, that has to do with the data, they actually did do every street. But the the list that's in the the paper report that I sent. Only has things that are in fair or condition or I think good condition. So if it wasn't on there, it's because they didn't find any major defects on the street.
Okay. Okay, sorry, I just had to ask them.
Don't forget, everybody, your meeting is on the eleven. Not on Tuesday. After later.
Yeah, it's funny to let me, yeah, she sent you the journal.
Yeah, I did, thanks, thanks, Debbie.
Can I go back to vacation now?
Have fun.
No.
Yes.
You better go and keep working on your youth council.
Yeah, no, well, I got a great partner in this, all right, thanks, everybody, bye.